Good evening, folks. We'll now call the Tuesday, August 19, 2014, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners to order. And it's time for invocation, and I'll lead us in prayer this evening. Before I do, I would like to make mention that we're very thankful to have Vice Chairman Marvin Norman here with us this evening. He lost his sister, Jo Evelyn Norman Morrison, and it speaks to his dedication to be here after such a tragic loss, and we'll mention him in our prayers. I'm going to take time this evening to mention Vaughn Sprinkle, the former chairman of the Iredell Statesville School Board. He passed away yesterday evening. Vaughn was one of the good guys. It was a pleasure to work with him and to resolve some of the issues that we were confronted, so we'll remember these two families as we pray this evening. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much to come in your presence, and we do remember Marvin and all of his family this evening. And we pray with Jo Evelyn's family that you'll be with them, you'll minister to them, that you'll give them hope, and their hope will be in you, that they'll see her again someday. We thank you for Marvin and his family, the blessing they've been to everyone they've come in contact with, the blessing that he personally has been to this county, and the friendship that we've enjoyed with him over the years. We pray you'll bless that family and watch over them. Tonight, we lift up to you the family of Vaughn Sprinkle. Sudden illness overtook Vaughn, but he was a man of good spirit. He was a good-hearted man who loved people, and he loved this county and he loved the school system he worked for. And he blessed a lot of lives in the Ag Program at North Iredell High School, and we miss him terribly, and we pray you'll bless and comfort those folks. We pray that you'll be with us in these proceedings tonight, that we will honor you, that what we say will encourage and not discourage, and that we will be good stewards, and we ask these things in Christ's name. Amen. Join us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the digital, with liberty and justice
I'll call on our county manager, Mr. Smith, this evening. Are there any adjustments to this agenda from the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one adjustment, and I'd like to add this as Memo 12A under Administrative Matters, come after letter F. And this is to approve a Budget Amendment Number 7 to appropriate fund balance reserved for Mitchell Community College for the purchase of property.
Okay. And tell me again where that's going to be, sir? I missed that.
That's going to be right after F before G.
Okay.
I don't think there's a proper letter between those two.
Okay.
Memo 12A.
12A, all right. Thank you, sir. Is that all you have? Okay, any adjustments to this agenda coming from any member of the board this evening? Hearing none, the floor is open for a motion for the adoption of this agenda as amended.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve this agenda as amended from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Under Presentations Before of Special Recognizations and Awards, we have a proclamation to recognize and express gratitude to Jacob Nastally for heroism. I believe Commissioner Griffith is going to proceed here.
I've known Jake a long time. He sat in my living room and skateboarded with my son, and sometimes the more his tattoos grew, the more my eyebrows went up, but Jake did a really amazing thing, and we want to recognize him. Whereas the Iredell County Board of Commissioners wish to express their gratitude to Jacob Nastally of the Cool Springs area, North Carolina, for his unselfish acts on Sunday, July 27, 2014, and whereas Jacob Nastally was recreating at the Kula Me River Park in Rowan County, North Carolina, when he observed a four-year-old child floating head down in the water, and whereas Mr. Nastally swam out to the child, pulled him from the water, and began to perform CPR while a friend called 911, and whereas Mr. Nastally performed CPR for 20 minutes, a skill he learned in the fifth grade yet has never actually utilized until the child began to breathe on his own, and whereas Jacob's Nastally's quick and heroic actions saved the life of a small child, now therefore be it resolved that the Iredell County Board of Commissioners does hereby recognize Jacob Nastally for his heroism. And as I understand, the little boy is going to make a full and complete recovery, and I'm just so grateful, Jacob, that you were there that day, tattoos and all, and I'm really, really, really proud of you and want to commend you for your actions. Congratulations.
We have no appointments before the board that I'm aware of. We'll move immediately to public hearings, and at this time, we'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing in regard to the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Heal. And I believe Mr. Merrick's going to present this.
Good evening, Chairman Johnson, Commissioners and Staff. Statesville Regional Development comes before you tonight in support of a request for an industrial development grant for an advanced metalworking company that is expanding its manufacturing operations to Statesville. For competitive reasons, the company wishes to remain anonymous at this time. Project HIL will create 35 new jobs and result in an additional $3.55 million in new taxable investment in the community. The company is engaged in advanced metalworking, which Statesville Regional Development has identified as one of its targeted strategic sectors. Statesville Regional Development is pleased to recommend, in accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Development Incentive Policy, that an unnamed company, known as Project HIL, be granted a performance-based incentive as follows. The company will invest $3,550,000 in new capital equipment. The company will create a total of 35 new jobs within the first year of operation. The incentive will be 80% of the taxable revenue on new investment over five years, as specified by county policy, or a total incentive of $56,406. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Are there any questions, Mr. Merrick? Okay, I guess not. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak in regard to this economic incentive? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. Hearing none, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
I make a motion to approve an economic incentive of $56,406 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of $3.55 million contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Halt's motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We'll again declare the meeting to be in a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Bickle. And I believe Mr. Carney is going to present this. Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman and members of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, as always, I appreciate you taking the time to hear from the Mooresville South Iredell Economic Development Corporation. Tonight, I will be presenting incentive requests for four different projects. Each of these projects are currently under a code name, and I would just like to make it clear that both this board and our general public that, once these projects fully commit to locate in this community, that all information regarding the project and details will be made public. It is our intent to always keep our community informed of these actions and activities of our Economic Development Corporation. So tonight, I'm here on behalf of Project Bickle. Project Bickle is an existing industry that is considering an expansion of machinery and equipment to their existing facility. This company currently employs over 100 full-time employees at their Mooresville-based facility and would bring an additional 16 new full-time positions with this expansion. Average starting wages of these employees would be $35,538 per year plus full benefits. This company plans to invest $5 million in the form of new machinery and equipment, and in accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Program, we are requesting incentive assistance be granted to Project Bickle for 80% of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. Based on a minimum of $3 million in investment, this would equate to an incentive of $58,200 paid over five years, and a maximum investment of $5 million would equate to a total incentive of $97,000 paid over five years. I thank you for your consideration and would be happy to answer any questions at this point in time.
Any questions, Mr. Carney? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to this? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. At this point, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an economic incentive of $97,000 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of $5 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Motion for approval of this request comes from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion on his motion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We'll again declare the meeting to be in a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Control. Mr. Carney?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Project Control is a new business interested in locating in the Mooresville South Iredell community. The company is based in North Dakota and is an environmentally friendly, non-toxic pest control solutions company. Their customers include John Deere, TSC, Ace Hardware, Minars, Lowe's, Targets, and Kroger. In recent years, this company has received numerous accolades, a few of those being top 30 most innovative U.S. bio-based companies in the nation, and also Inc. 5000's fastest-growing company. If successful, the company would lease 60,000 square feet to begin their manufacturing operations and invest $5.8 million in new machinery and equipment. Starting with 14 full-time employees, they plan to expand to 380 full-time employees over the next four years. Average starting salaries for the company would be $32,000 per year plus full benefits. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Program, we're requesting that incentive assistance be granted to Project Control for 80% of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. Based on a minimum of $3 million would equate to a total incentive of $58,200 paid over a period of five years, and on a maximum investment of $5.8 million would equate to a total incentive of $112,520 paid over five years. And I'm happy to answer any questions with Project Control at this time.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Carney? Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to address this matter? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record. This time, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an economic development incentive between $58,200 and $112,520 over a five-year period based on an investment ranging from $3 to $5.8 million in Iredell County and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Griffith's motion in favor? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll again declare the meeting to be in a public hearing for consideration of economic development incentive for Project Dallas. Mr. Carney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also bring before you tonight Project Dallas. Project Dallas is a UK-based aerospace company that manufactures seating, hinges, and tray tables for the airline industry. The company is considering purchasing 20,000 square feet of manufacturing space in our community. If successful, this company would add at least five new full-time employees to the facility, bringing their total employment job count to Mooresville to 15. Average starting salaries of these positions would begin at $40,000 per year plus full benefits. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Program, we're requesting that incentive assistance be granted to Project Dallas for 80% of increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. Now, based on a minimum investment of $3 million, their incentive would equate to $58,200 per year in total incentives paid over five years, and I'll be happy to answer any questions in regards to Project Dallas. They're all getting confusing now.
Yeah, fine. Any questions, Mr. Carney? If not, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to Project Dallas? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. Seeing no one, we'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic incentive, $58,200 over a five-year period, based on the company's investment of $3 million and a contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Any discussion on Mr. Halt's motion for approval? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to a public hearing for the consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Golden. We'll declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. And Mr. Carney?
Thank you, sir. Last, but certainly not least, I have for you Project Golden. Project Golden is an existing industry expansion that is considering expanding in the Mooresville South Iredell community. This company has been located in Mooresville for over 10 years and employs over 90 full-time employees. Through the years, this company has grown to over 150 facilities around the nation. Our Mooresville South Iredell facility is competing for a machinery and equipment upgrade to their current processing lines. This expansion would ensure that this facility remains competitive nationally for years to come. If successful, Project Golden would invest $8 million over the next year in machinery, equipment, and facility upgrades. In accordance with the Iredell County Industrial Incentive Program, we're requesting that incentive assistance be granted to Project Golden for 80% of the increased tax value paid back for a period of five years. Based on a minimum investment of $3 million, their incentive would equate to $58,000 for a total incentive paid over five years, and based on a maximum incentive of $8 million, that incentive would equate to a maximum incentive of $155,200 paid over a total of five years. I'd be happy to answer any questions that this board may have on Project Golden.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Carney? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regard to Project Golden? If you would, come forward and state your name for the record, please. We'll declare this public hearing closed, and the floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an economic incentive of $155,200 over a five-year period based on the company's investment of $8 million and contingent upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
Okay, we have a motion to grant this request from Vice Chairman Norman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Merrick, as well. That brings us to Administrative Matters, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item we have is A, Memo 7, and this is a request from Brad Brawley with our Emergency Management Department for approval of Budget Amendment Number 5 to appropriate fund balance for the 911 emergency telephone system.
Good evening. Recently, the Communication Center added a software program called Pro QA that assists the telecommunications in performing the emergency medical dispatch instructions, and it also logs their actions. This request will allow us to interface the Pro QA system software to our computer-rated dispatch system, which enables the emergency medical dispatch data to be automatically transferred to our computer-rated dispatch record, thus making the process more efficient. Currently, our telecommunications are entering much of the same data twice. Are there any questions?
Okay. Any questions? Okay. If not, floor is open for a motion.
Motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 5.
I have a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 5 from Commissioner Griffith. Any discussion? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Item B is a request from Steve Messick, our Library Director, to approve Budget Amendment Number 6 for scholarships for two library staff.
Good evening. I'm requesting approval of a budget amendment for $2,400 to receive these funds from the State Library of North Carolina for scholarships for two of our employees to attend the Association of Small and Rural Libraries Convention in September in Tacoma, Washington. These grant funds were competitive scholarships from the State Library of North Carolina. These were statewide scholarships, so it's quite a distinction that we had two county employees who won these scholarships. This will, the scholarships are for $1,200 each, so for a total of $2,400, and this will cover their travel costs, the conference registration, meals, and so forth. And any funds that are not expended on their trip and conference will be used to purchase books for the library. The Association of Small and Rural Libraries focuses on libraries in small towns and rural areas like Troutman. And the two employees, Julie Moore and Jennifer Sixkiller, who will be attending this, will be attending meetings on learning things like developing early literacy, maximizing the use of limited resources and staff, and teaching digital literacy. Jennifer and Julie have been at the library in Troutman since September, and they have done a great job since they've been there, since they have been working there. The use of the library has increased by 25% because of the development of the programs that they have and the engagement with the community. So I think this is a great opportunity for them to learn some even newer skills and new techniques that they can use to help improve library services, and then also share with the rest of our staff when they return. I'll be glad to answer any questions if one may have.
Any questions, Mr. Messick? If not, floor is open for a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 6.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, and Vice Chairman Norman, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Item C is a request from David Salivi, our Director of Public Safety, to approve the release of capital equipment funds to Mountmore and VFD, and Roger Hoover, the Chief of Mountmore, is here as well.
Thank you. As a result of the recent rescue contracts between Iredell County and the rescue squads and newly adopted rescue funding formula, a capital equipment fund is available for county rescue squads to purchase needed equipment to maintain and improve rescue services in their assigned districts. In February of this year, the Board of Commissioners granted the South Iredell Volunteer Fire Department a portion of these funds to purchase needed equipment to improve their level of service as a light rescue provider in their service district. At that time, Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department chose to wait till FY '15, when the additional funds were budgeted before making a similar request. Through our rescue service agreements, rescue organizations are asked to follow the county's capital purchasing process. Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department requested quotes on this equipment from different vendors. Chief Roger Hoover of Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department is here tonight to outline his department's needs and to make that request. After Chief Hoover's presentation, the action being requested of the board tonight is to approve the release of $20,432.71 of capital equipment funds from Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department's Capital Equipment Reserve Fund. Currently, Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department has $23,229 in their capital equipment budget. Thank you.
Chief Hoover?
Thank you, Mr. Salivi. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. On behalf of Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department, I'd like to make a request to purchase the equipment that you have on the competitive quote in your packet. The purchase of this equipment will allow Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department to provide a more efficient service to the citizens of our district. I'll also add that we have not made any improvements to our rescue equipment since the purchase of our 2007 rescue engine. We were granted rescue status in April this year and have recently signed a contract to provide rescue services to our primary response district. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have regarding the purchase of this equipment.
Any questions, Chief Hoover? Let me just say this again, chief. On behalf of the Board of Commissioners and our staff, I want to thank you for the highly professional and respectful way that you responded to this county when we came to you. Through every step of this process, you and your Board of Directors have demonstrated great stewardship of everything that's been entrusted to them, and I just want to express I have a great deal of respect for you and your department. It's been a pleasure to work with your predecessors, but you are filling well in the mold that they established for you, and you answered the call when we needed you, and we thank you for it.
Yes, sir. It means a lot to hear that, and I can promise you that we will continue to provide a great service, and we have a great working relationship with our neighboring departments, and I think we've got a great program going in the south end.
I think so. Okay, so...
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. The floor is open for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the release of $20,432.71 capital equipment funds from Mountmore Volunteer Fire Department Inc.'s Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Okay. Any discussion on Mr. Halt's motion for approval? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Item D is a request from Matthew Todd, our Planning Manager, to call for a public hearing on September 2 in regard to a release of jurisdiction to Mooresville.
Good evening to the board. I think everyone's getting really familiar with this process, but again, we just have a request for a public hearing. Property is on Rocky River Road. Last year, the board released the adjacent track. It has since, it was released last year, and then it was annexed this year by the Town of Mooresville. So again, we've got this small, less than half-acre track adjacent to it that they're requesting for the public hearing next month.
Any questions? And the action would be to call for a public hearing, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. If there are no questions, the floor is open for a motion.
Make a motion to set a public hearing September 2, 2014, for a release of zoning and subdivision jurisdiction to the Town of Mooresville by BMCH North Carolina LLC.
We have a motion to grant this request from Commissioner Griffith. There's no discussion, the floor is... All in favor? There's no discussion, the floor is, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Matthew, we said, Mr. Chairman, may I mention something that's kind of in regard to this request?
Uh huh.
Matthew and I spoke this morning, and among some other areas that we've kind of got our eyes on, we're going to probably be seeing a lot more of these types of requests. Activity has gotten to a point in Mooresville that ETJ requests are going to start popping up, about 220 or so acres in two separate projects we talked about this morning. So at some point, you may want to give some consideration. We've had some policies in the past about setting thresholds when you want to release these types of requests, or if you want to set up any standards, you know, again, to have a threshold to give you some guidance when you make those decisions. But I do anticipate, and I think Matthew agrees, these are going to be coming a lot quicker than we've seen in the last five or so years. So just wanted to add that as information.
I agree, and I've talked to Mayor Miles Atkins, and I believe Mr. Kobel, and a couple of folks from Mooresville. And as we all know, the legislature pretty much clipped the wings of municipalities as far as ETJ and annexation what, a couple or three years ago? But something we might want to think about that I think would accomplish the same thing, but, and it would address the concerns of the Town of Mooresville in this specific area, as far as having some control should they extend utilities over what type of development, so that they could protect their investment. But I think it would go a long way toward relieving the angst of those who think that they may come under the zoning jurisdiction of someone that they have no right to vote for or against, and that has always been a problem for the folks out in the county. I think we should pursue the idea that we would work with Mooresville as, particularly along commercial thoroughfares and corridors, to come up with a mutually agreed upon standards that both the county staff, county board, their planning staff, their town board are comfortable with, and that those, that any zoning jurisdiction or any change in those standards would have to be mutually agreed upon by both parties. It would protect them as far as their investment, the extension of utilities, and it would protect folks out in the county from what they may consider abuse by someone they can't vote for. I don't think I'm skirting a foul of the law here, so you might want to let Mr. Pope look at it, but I think if you had a mutually agreed upon standards that could only be amended by mutual consent, you could accomplish that and not run afoul of the law in the new restrictions on ETJ and annexation. I think that's the avenue along which we should pursue. If you want to kick that around a little bit and you see some legal problems, you can say, "Mr. Johnson, that's not going to work." It won't be the first time I heard it, but it's just an idea, so I'll leave it to the experts to work through that, but I think that'll work.
Can we get some ideas? Is there a way we can have a pre-agenda or something in the next meeting or two to give you guys time to come back with us? Because we're meeting with Mooresville in September anyway, right?
Yeah, we're having some trouble getting that date hammered out. So yes, that's one of the, that's one of the main discussion items that we were going to have from a specific area perspective, particularly Cornelius Road and the connector between Mizepha. But I think it'd be good to have kind of a refresher and look at the legal aspects and have Matthew potentially come back and give you all a report after talking with Bill or Lisa or whomever.
That'd give us a chance to talk about where we want to go before that, right? At some point, if that suits everybody else.
Okay. Right. Forgive me, I think we voted on that, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Todd.
Item E, which is Memo 11, this is a request for approval of proposed legislative goals to be submitted to the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And in your packet, we were asked to, specifically Commissioner Robertson had asked that we look from a staff perspective at some goals that we wanted to propose, and came back with six after polling the department heads. And this is in, this is in, this is a result of a request from the Association of County Commissioners in preparation for the 2015-16 biennium. What the, what the Association does is they solicit these goals from each county in the state, take them back and review them, and allow each county to comment and kind of work up the overall message that they're going to be proposing. And this is basically the first part of that. And what I had done is basically send out a message to all of the department heads to give them a copy of the information submitted by the NCACC, which kind of goes through the specifics and the methodology of coming up with these goals, and then asked each one to submit something if they had it. And we came up with six, and they're in four areas. I've asked the subject matter experts to be here tonight in case I fumble the details, but I'm going to try and go through these for you. And ultimately, what I would request tonight is approval of these six goals if you, if you agree, and in addition of anything that you may have. Now, we have a deadline of September 19th to get this information back to the Association, and if you do have something tonight that you want us to research, we have some time to get back at our next meeting to discuss it. I'm going to start in Emergency Management. Each year, we receive an Emergency Management Performance Grant, and basically, this allows our Emergency Management Department to participate in exercises in preparation for disasters that may come to Iredell County. There's a sliding scale of funding that these grants are based on, and we are lumped in with basically a large range of populations. The way that it's broken down is in three, for, you know, basically three sums. A county with a population less than or equal to 75,000 people receives just over $20,000. A county with a population between 75 and 200,000 receives $35,000, and anything over 200,000 receives over $62,000. Now, we are at 165,000 plus in our population, so we're much closer than to a county of 200,000 than a county of 75,000. And what we're requesting is, even though this is not a ton of money, that there be a reallocation within this range and that Iredell County be broken out with some, with some others into another category. And what I would propose, and what David Martin has proposed, is to increase EMPG funding to counties with the population more than 125,000 but less than or equal to 175,000 from $35,000 a year to $48,000. That'll just give us the opportunity to participate in more and different types of drills and exercises. And as a note, there are 10 counties that would fall within that range. And please stop me if you have any questions. The second is under 911 Communications. There is a 911 charge attached to basically every phone bill in this state, and that money is redistributed to counties, and we are able to spend that money for various things that relate to 911 communications and dispatch. There are, they, over the years, and correct me if I'm wrong, David, over the years, they've really kind of ratcheted down on the distribution of that money and limited the number of things we can spend it for. In the past, they have opened it up for one-time purchases in the past, and what we are proposing is that we, that they allow us to do that again. And the proposed goal would be to expand county government's use of 911 funds or allow one-time flexibility for the use of those funds. We continuously go to them and are continuously turned down for various expenditures, and what we'd like is a little more flexibility. The third is under Public Health. These are the next two, actually, both deal with environmental health, food, and lodging. The first is the enforcement of State Law 2009-27, and that's the Smoke-Free Restaurant and Bar Law. Environmental health currently enforces the No Smoking Law for basically all food and lodging establishments, whether they permit them or not, and they do not permit every one. And that causes them some issues, in particular with bars, I would say, probably the biggest one, that they have no real authority to, you know, crack the whip on them, and they don't have, they don't carry a big stick. What they're proposing is that we shift the enforcement of this law from environmental health to an agency that has direct permitting authority over the establishment violating the law. Generally, that's going to be the ABC Board, specifically in that case. The second is very similar, but this is the enforcement and inspections of carbon monoxide detectors in lodging facilities. Food and lodging does make those inspections. However, they're not as well-versed in the need and the necessity for these, for carbon monoxide detectors as some, another agency such as the State Fire Marshal's Office. And what we propose is to shift the enforcement of Session Law 2013-413, which is the installation of carbon monoxide detectors in lodging facilities from environmental health to an agency that has knowledge of, to properly enforce the law, such as the Fire Marshal. And as another note, most of the situations that we're going to see in Iredell County, such as these, are going to be inside the municipalities. That would not have a huge impact on our Fire Marshal's Office. And the final two are in solid waste, and these are also related. We're seeing the possible erosion of our white goods fees and also scrap tire or revenues from these two, from these two fees that are collected upon the purchase of white goods and/or tires. And in talking with David Lambert, especially with the white goods, although it's not a lot of money, $40,000 a year, that does allow them some flexibility and has also allowed them to build a white goods facility in Mooresville pretty recently that was a cost of $345,000, so that does add up. And losing that money would basically cause us to have to put a tipping fee in place and look for other avenues for revenue. And what we propose this goal to be is to restore the collected white goods disposal fee to the original intent, funding local government white goods programs. And very similarly with scrap tire collections, we propose to restore the collected scrap tire disposal fee to the original intent, funding local government scrap tire programs. And those are the six that we would propose tonight, and if you have any questions of me, I'd be glad to try and answer them, however, I'd probably defer anything detailed to the folks we have in the audience. And if you have anything additionally, I'd be glad to take some, take a look at it and come back with some research or add it to our list.
Any questions of these folks? Do you have some other ideas you would like to see added to these goals? I think you said we have maybe one more meeting before we need to finalize this?
We do. We do. And I don't know, Commissioner Hopp and I were talking a little bit about the road funding. I don't know if you want to bring that up.
What my suggestion was, I talked to Representative Turner today, and what I'd like to do is ask Ron if the other members agree with me to get with Representative Brock, Turner, and Brawley and find out if there's anything we can do as a board to help move the process forward to make sure Phase Two of the interstate project is, you know, when it may be able to be put back in, you know, funding reallocated for that project, and if we can help with that process. And, you know, maybe through Ron contacting them, or if they can let us know officially what we can do to assist them as a, as a group in the county, all the elected officials, even the towns of Mooresville and Troutman Estates, will, everybody getting together and support that, that funding be reallocated.
Senator Brock is of the opinion that it's still possible that it might be funded, but it would be broken up, the second phase. I asked him in the meeting we had at the Mayor Managers' meeting at Troutman Library if, if, if it was possible, and he says yes, and I said, "Well, the mobilization cost for a project that size, it'd got to be at least a couple of million dollars just to get out there and get set up and get ready to go to work." And he said that was probably in the ballpark. So if they demobilize and then they mobilize again, you're talking about wasting millions of dollars, and that was one of the arguments that he was going to make. But he is on the Senate Appropriations Committee, and he is working on this, and he thinks he can maybe get the second phase split up into two parts so that it could be scheduled so that as, as one phase begins to wind down as far as its funding, it could blend into the next one. And he's working on that, and he's going to get back in touch with us. But he's got a pretty strong ally since he's on the Appropriations Committee.
So would it help us, Mr. Chairman, to let Ron get in touch with him and see if we do an official letter or something in support of that project being funded, or some, find out how we can help him help, help the county, is what my point is?
I guess we, we could. I don't want to get in the way. One observation I've found in trying to do this is your enemies make it difficult to get things done, and sometimes your friends make it impossible. And maybe we just, I think he came away with a clear understanding of what our concerns were, but if we wanted to maybe write a letter and express to him those concerns again, just to keep it on the front burner, but he's, he's working it pretty hard.
Okay. Well, we can definitely, we'll put something together, and maybe, since that's a specific, as I think it through, since that's a specific project, and we're talking about 100 counties, it may not be something to send through this process unless you wanted to say something to the effect that, you know, the overall philosophy of this funding mechanism should allow projects that are already funded to continue and not move them back.
One thing, Ron, we did, Marvin and I attended the, and Renee attended the ASFL Conference for County Commissioners, and they talked about, we're going to have to start thinking on a regional basis and collaborate with multiple counties, so it may be something we can mention here and do something because the interstate project for 77 and 40 benefits our region as much as, you know, as it does Iredell County. So that was one thing that we discussed at the, at the Commissioners' Convention was that we have to start thinking more collaboratively on a regional basis and a state basis, you know, because the counties together, working together, have a lot stronger voice. And this project specifically in Iredell County, it benefits all of the state in my opinion. So I think it may be, if y'all have that desire to maybe add it to this, I don't think it can hurt because that was our main focus. Marvin and Renee can tell you, and Mr. Mallory went, and that was our main focus, is the counties are going to have to collaborate where possible to strengthen our state voice. So I think that might help to add it to this, and we can discuss that in more detail maybe at the next meeting, but I like that idea, you know, because if we can come together with a state voice, that project being fully funded benefits our state and our region very strongly.
Maybe, maybe we need to have some discussion among ourselves, and perhaps at the next meeting, we can give a more unified direction to the staff is what we intend to do, but...
So we need to table this?
Well, yeah, we can go ahead and act on these if you like and adopt them, these are a goal, or we can do it as an omnibus motion later, but in terms of the regional thing, that was what happened to the project. It was, it was, if not the, one of the most important state projects, and when the new evaluation system came through, the modification of legislation as relates to transportation, all of a sudden, this project is not a state project, it's a regional... all of a sudden this project is not a state project, it's a regional project. So it didn't, it didn't make the criteria to, to advance, to do the whole thing for Phase Two. That's what cut Phase Two out of it. So I'm not sure how much, I'm not sure that the regional approach has legs as far as carrying this project. It may be that the best thing to do is have a good friend on the Appropriations Committee. I hate to be that crass about it, but maybe that, that's the best thing. We'll talk it among ourselves and give you some direction at the next meeting. Do you want to go ahead and act on what we have here, or what's your pleasure?
Yes, sir. I'd like to recommend approval of the proposed six goals.
Okay. Okay, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Item F is a request from Susan Robertson with the Finance Department to consider the adoption of a bond order for school bonds titled Order Authorizing One Hundred and Nineteen Million Five Hundred Thousand Dollar School Bonds, and adoption of a resolution calling for a bond referendum.
Thank you. Based upon the request by Mooresville Graded School District to remove a new Mooresville Middle School from its proposed project in the planned bond referendum for November, our Bond Council has prepared an amended bond order and a notice of bond referendum for the Board to consider tonight. This reduces the total authorization for, for school bonds from one hundred and fifty-one point five million to one hundred and nineteen point five million. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ms. Blumstein?
Does this still make it the largest bond passed? Will this...
The largest referendum, yes, ma'am, still.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for your staff and all staff for the work they've put into this in a short timeframe also.
You're welcome. I did email to the Board members a day or two ago, or I guess it was yesterday, a worksheet that I had prepared based on the four separate issues and assuming one tax increase rather than multiple tax increases, which would equal a four point two five cent increase one time at the beginning of the projects rather than increasing it incrementally, and it will reduce the total increase that the Board would have to consider.
Good job.
What would be that total increase, Ms. Blumstein?
Four point two five cents.
It looks like that I should have made an announcement that on August the fifth, two thousand and fourteen, the Board of Commissioners adopted the order entitled Order Authorizing One Hundred and Fifty-One Million Five Hundred Thousand School Bonds, and the Board has been requested to amend and restate the order to reduce the principal amount of the bonds. And Ms. Blum, Ms. Robertson's already done step two.
Okay.
I think I'm right. Okay, so now the floor is open for a motion. And we need to read...
Yes.
She disappeared.
We need to read them last time?
Yes.
We need to read it in its entirety?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before I read most one, I'd just like to say, I wanted to thank both school systems for their cooperation and collaborating and communication to come up with, with some common ground that I think addresses the cost, the overall cost of the bonds, the equity issues. I think it makes it more palatable and acceptable to the taxpayers potentially. This would allow, if passed, for the county to take care of the critical needs that addresses the safety and security for the facilities through the phases with oversight by the Commissioners if the economy would allow. So I just wanted to publicly thank both systems for setting aside some differences in trying to move the process forward and making it more acceptable potentially for the taxpayers to move the process forward. I, I think that took a lot of collaboration and showed a lot of character, in my opinion. And if I may, I'll go into motion one. That's okay. Motion one, to adopt the order authorizing one hundred and nineteen point five million school bonds for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, improving, expanding and renovating school buildings and other school facilities in said county, including without limitation, A, the construction, expansion, renovation of Cool Springs Elementary School, North Iredale High School, South Iredale High School, State'sville Middle School and Brawley Middle School, and the construction of two new middle schools and the acquisition of related land, rights-of-way equipment for the Iredale State School Boards of Education, and B, the construction, expansion and renovation of Mooresville High School and the acquisition of related land, rights-of-way and equipment for Mooresville Graded School District, that taxes shall be levied in an amount sufficient to pay the principal of the interest on said bonds, and that this order shall take effect when approved by the voters of Iredale County at a referendum as provided in the Local Government Bond Act as amended.
Okay. Let me say from the beginning, I intend to support these proceedings tonight. I think they address my biggest concern as, as it relates to equity. I do want to publicly commend somebody. They, they took a pretty bad shot at lacking, but Martin Page, Cindy Haynes and Max James, I think, showed great political courage. I know I find myself at odds with the editor of the newspaper, but they, you'll seldom hear me quote Barack Obama, but elections do have consequences. We need to be sure that we're, we make people aware that property taxes will go up. And while all taxpayers are impacted by the proposal, let me focus on one particular group of taxpayers that over the twenty years that I've been on this board, I seldom hear spoken of, and that is the small business owner in this county. A typical small business owner who is a C or S corporation, who withholds his own taxes, or if he is a sole proprietorship and, and withholds his own taxes and pays self-employment tax. If he's only modestly successful, by the time he pays his federal tax, his state tax, and he matches his own social security, he is at nearly a fifty percent tax rate. Not many people aware of that. Let me say that again, at nearly a fifty percent tax rate. That is before he pays sales tax, excise tax for property tax. In my opinion, and I think by anybody's opinion, that is a confiscatory rate of taxation. These are the same people that politicians pay tribute to as the foundation or the backbone of the economy, but the reality, reality is they are taxed at confiscatory rates. When local schools or charitable fundraisers look for contributions, the local small business people are among the first ones that they approach. They're the people who hire young people and give them these, the first opportunity to learn personal and technical skills which will benefit them later in life. And many of these same business owners continue to face challenges in a recovery that is the longest and weakest recovery since the Great Depression. Now, I'm gonna, I'm gonna keep saying this, and I know some folks are getting tired of hearing it because they told me so, but I'm not going to quit saying it. What we are experiencing are the consequences of a textbook, classical Keynesian attempt to restore the economy to economic growth. It has resulted in an asset-riching, asset-rich, income-poor economic environment. Folks have seen their property vays recover substantially, though many have a long way to go. They've seen their 401, the IRA, and their equity investments rise considerably. These are due to the deficit spending, the bond buying by the Federal Reserve and artificially low interest rates, which distorts the flow of capital and causes people to seek higher rates of return. But their incomes have not gone up because of the demand for labor remains low. The unemployment is down, but so is the labor participa, participation rate. Many of the jobs created are part-time and low-paying. Also, capital investment in new machinery and equipment is anemic. Capital investment leads to increased productivity, which leads to higher real wages without causing inflationary pressures. In the twenty-eight years since the Census Bureau has provided state-by-state income data, in North Carolina, the third quintile, which is the middle class, that's dead spot in the middle, in North Carolina, since two thousand and eight, their real income has gone down ten point two percent. Gone down, ten point two percent. So those folks are continuing to struggle. Now, the new data will come out for two thousand and thirteen, next month. It will probably show some improvement, but that is a substantial hit that these people have endured, and we need to keep that in mind when we talk about taxes. This means that any real broad-based economic growth is not foreseeable. Debt always limits your options in the future, and this debt will be borne by the existing taxpayers and the existing tax base with no relief coming from an expanding tax base like we enjoyed in the nineties and the two thousand. Now, the Mooresville Project, I still have concerns, but my biggest concern has been dealt with as far as equity. In a reasonable amount of time, with future appropriation, equity can be arrived at again. But the Mooresville Project is a departure, and nobody can rebut this argument. It is a departure from DPI and State Board of Education guidelines. This being the case, we need to think about going forward. What will be the objective standards that we will adhere to once we disconnect ourselves from those standards? I've already heard comments that if we're going to do that, then why don't we expand the auditorium in the bond at North and South High School? It will be difficult to maintain discipline in the future without, without objective standards that we can point to in regard to such facilities. So that, that is a concern that I think we need to deal with. Given the circumstances and decision made at this point, this is probably the closest that we'll get to equity. I do not claim to know or even hope to know the collective minds of Iredale citizens. I will, however, defer to, to their judgment and contribute to the faithful stewardship of this endeavor. So, any other comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, in communication with the different superintendents and the different board members, again, I want to commend all who communicated and collaborated to come to this common ground. It's the first time in history that the two boards have come together on behalf of the, of the kids and the taxpayers in, in the county. They reduced the bond. That took courage from Mooresville, but I want to elaborate on that. I've had questions publicly, well, why did they ask for it if they didn't need it? It wasn't that they didn't need the project. The Commissioners asked both school systems to come forward with five of their critical projects. Both systems did. So after there was some public debate as to the equity issue, Mooresville, in my opinion, selflessly, on behalf of the taxpayers, their need was down the road, potentially four to five years. They offset that to potentially six years to come back. So both systems have skin in the game potentially for their next bond. Having said that, I hope that changes the tone of politics in the entire county. It does not cost the taxpayers in this county one cent to collaborate and communicate and sit down and, and have discussions. That took a lot of courage for the systems to come together to do that. And the growth in this county, Chairman Johnson talks about the Mooresville Project. The growth in the county in capital needs are based on a needs basis. The growth in the south end is tremendously more than north and south. I understand that argument. However, all agree that sometimes being proactive, and I'll use a quote again from him, "Sometimes the conservative thing to do is spend money, and sometimes the conservative thing to do is to be proactive." So I think we, as a board, sending it to the voters, I want to thank the Commissioners for doing that. We're not always going to agree, but I think that's what makes a democracy great. We have different ideas, different backgrounds, but together, we're going to send it to the taxpayers. They're going to make a decision for the schools and Mitchell College. And I think, again, I want to emphasize that the success of the schools directly impacts economic growth in this county. Every economic incentive request we've had, the, the, either expansion, when they came here, or the new companies coming, are coming here, be, one reason is our schools are great. We're getting a great return on our dollar, as the John Locke Foundation says. So I think we, as a community and a county, we have to give credit where credit's due. We have to applaud our school systems when they're great, our, our parents in the county, through all the other opportunities, Christian, private schools, they have a choice. But what makes a democracy great? We're not always going to agree. Steve and I are friends, we go to church together. That doesn't make us dislike each other because we disagree on the Mooresville Project. I just think sometimes using Lake Norman as an example, sometimes the proactive thing is to do is spend money. Sometimes the proactive thing to do is to plan longer down the road so you're not within four months of open like Lake Norman, and I'm not criticizing anybody here or the systems. We have a prime example in the south end of the county where the growth is tremendous that tells us we need to be proactive and plan for growth in the south end. The equity argument in the whole county, we can look at that in several ways. Troutman South, almost seventy percent of the taxes in the county are paid Troutman South. So the South, Troutman South subsidizes all the other services for the entire county and have for years. Emergency services, fire and rescue, Sheriff's Department. So we're in this together as a county. The south end of the county has subsidized the north end of the county, but we have a diverse county, and we're all in together. So what my main point is, is I hope this changes the tone of the elected bodies in this county to sit down, communicate, so next time we're not trying to go backwards and reinvent the wheel. We can, you know, through collaboration and cooperation, and I don't want to keep emphasizing that, but I commend Martin Page and those guys, I commend the other school board members, Mooresville, selfishly to reduce the bond. So again, I want to thank the Commissioners for sending it to the voters, and I want the, I want the voters to understand there is a positive economic impact to the success of the schools. And it helps the property values in turn, the Commissioners will have oversight if the bond's passed, so thank you.
Mr. Chair Coffer?
Yes, ma'am.
Point of order, there's a motion on the floor that we vote.
Yeah. Motion's been made to approve this request in regard to authorizing one, one hundred and nineteen million five hundred thousand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. At this time, I'll direct the Clerk of the Board to publish said orders together with the appended statement as required by the Local Government Bond Act as amended in the State'sville Record and Landmark. This is going to require a second motion. The floor is open for motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to adopt the resolution calling for a bond referendum on November fourth, two thousand and fourteen, at which there shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the county the question stated in the form of the ballot set in Section Four of this resolution, and directing the Clerk to the Board to publish a notice of bond referendum in the State'sville Record and Landmark once at least fourteen days before October tenth, two thousand and fourteenth, and once again, not less than seven days before October tenth, two thousand and fourteen, and to deliver a certified copy of this resolution to the Iredale County Board of Elections within three days of its passage.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
The next item is Memo Twelve A, and Susan Robertson will make that request.
Mitchell Community College officials have negotiated a land purchase close to its Mooresville campus. And several years ago, the Board of Commissioners did appropriate funds for a couple of years that we've accumulated and carried over as reserve fund balance for Mitchell College, and they've requested a hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from that reserve fund balance so that they can close on this land purchase. This will act... This will, after this $100,000, they'll still have a balance of $263,000 remaining.
This is the same land which talked of earlier?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve budget amendment 7.
We have a motion to approve budget number 7 for the acquisition of land from Mitchell College. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item G is a request from the Tax Administration for approval of the July 2014 refunds and releases, and there are no county commissioners' names on these reports.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have motion approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And finally, item H is a request for approval of the minutes for July 29th and August 5th, 2014.
Okay. Floor's open for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to announcements. We have no announcements of vacancies occurring on boards and commissions. The first one we have, we have under appointments to boards and commissions, the Troutman Planning Board.
Motion to table.
Motion to table from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The Fire Tax District Board, we have three appointments to make.
Motion to table.
Okay. We have a motion to table from Commissioner Griffith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Mitchell Community College Board of Trustees. Time I'd like to nominate Mr. Jonathan Byers. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'd move we close the floor to nomination, appoint Mr. Byers by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Unfinished business. Could I make just a couple of comments on the recent development? Recently, what originated as House Bill 201 in the North Carolina Legislature was passed, and I want to thank some people this morning, that thing, this evening, that thing was probably, ah, what, getting close to three years ago now, we started talking about tax deferral on property for economic development, and it finally made it. There's one person that I would like to thank in this meeting tonight, and that is Ms. Lisa Valdez, who helped us wade through the legal language of all that and kept us headed in the right direction, and she probably refused to stand up and take a bow because she is an anomaly. She isn't a bashful attorney. But thank you very much. Did an excellent job there. She's to be commended. There's a couple other people that I want to thank, Rena Turner. Rena Turner stayed on this thing day and night. We were on the phone for hours on end the last few days as she was bargaining with some folks. She even brought folks from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners here to meet, and we persuaded them that this was a good idea. What this means is if you have a piece of property that you would like to, to develop commercially, the county and the Economic Development Corporation will be glad to discuss it with you. If you have a property with good egress or ingress, close proximity to utilities, that would probably be favorable toward rezoning, we could take action to rezone your property, and you will not pay the increased taxes between what you're paying now for this existing zoning and the upgrade in zoning until you actually sell the property. It removes a huge dissonance for people to participate. I think this is a good idea because it does not require the county to go out and buy huge sums, spend huge sums of money buying land. It'll keep it on the tax books, it'll keep it producing income, and we will reap the benefit down the road. So everybody that's listening, the county is open for business. If you're interested in participating with us, we'd be glad to talk to you. I do want to make one comment, though. We can do, folks, what we can at the local level to create economic growth, but we're battling for a piece of a smaller pie. Because overall, in the aggregate, our economy is still not growing. Now, the state, I think, contrary to the thinking that some people, took the right step in cutting marginal and corporate tax rates, because every time in my lifetime you've seen economic expansion, it has been, it has been preceded by cuts in corporate tax rate and marginal tax rate. And I won't talk about a Republican doing it, I'll talk about a Democrat doing it, and that was John Kennedy. And I was a young man in the 60s, coming of age, and the 60s were a booming time, and we can be there again. But let me tell you one thing, and I, and I don't mean to lecture, but just to make you aware, as you think about such things. Imagine that we did everything we did and the state did everything they, they could, and we were, we were highly competitive as far as someone wishing to locate in the United States. But the United States is not the world, and decisions of these magnitudes are made by clicking a mouse, and capital moves at light speed. Now, I'm gonna issue a disclaimer. I am not advocating any lifestyle, and I mean nothing detrimental to people who are unattractive. So please abandon your neurotic sensitivities and let me make a valid point. Imagine for just a minute that you're a young man out on the town for a night of revelry and fun-making, and you're walking down the street. Now, on this side of the street, there's a bar, and there's a bar on the other side of the street. And let's imagine for a minute that the cover charge of that bar equals the corporate tax rate of respective countries. And let's imagine that the attractiveness, the physical attractiveness, of the people who are waiting tables in those bars equates to the regulatory burden of government. So the young man walks up to the first door of the first bar, and he asks the doorman, "What is the cover charge?" And the doorman says it is $35. $35 equals, equals to the United States corporate tax rate of 35%. And he says, "Can I look inside?" And he says, "Yes." So he looks inside, and everybody is ugly. Because they represent the regulatory burdens. We are on pace in the last five years. Each year, we have set a new record for regulatory burdens that have drained at least $100 million per regulation out of the economy each year. We're a record to do that. So he looks in there, the regulatory burden is heavy, the tax rate is heavy, and the young man's mind, the cover charge is too high, and there are no good-looking people that he'd like to spend the night with. So he closes the door. He walks across the street. He asks the doorman at the second bar, "What is the cover charge?" He says, "It's $12.50." He says, "Can I look inside?" He says, "Sure," and he cracks the door, and the place is full of beautiful people. And everybody's having a wonderful time, and prosperity is everywhere. Imagine for yourself for just one moment that you are that young man and ask yourself one simple question. Which bar are you going to enter? It's apparent which one you're gonna enter. But it's worse than that, folks. You're gonna hear this term more often in the coming days, inversion. And what that is, is a corporate company in the United States allowing itself to be acquired by a foreign company that oftentimes is smaller than it is, and relocate their corporate headquarters to another country. Medtronics made that decision last week, and you're gonna continue to hear it. If you want people coming into your bar and having a good time and spending money and enjoying themselves, you gotta get your cover charge down or they're not coming. It's really that simple. As Milton Friedman says, "If you want to know how people are going to behave, look for the incentives." It's really that simple. The problem is, nobody running things today understands that simple truth. I appreciate your indulgence in the next episode of The World According to Johnson, but I can see by the look on some of your faces, you seem to be getting it. Thank you very much. Okay. And some nights, I am full of myself. Okay. Public comment period. Mr. Rader's with us this evening, and would like to address this board.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. A brief aside, I think the answer to your argument is economic patriotism. I'm supposed to want to pay that $35 because I'm a good fella.
I don't know what idiot came up with that term.
Well, some New Yorkers have been talking about that.
Yeah, humor, yeah.
Um, my name is Frank Rader. I'm the treasurer of the, my school's first organization. I spoke two weeks ago. Yesterday, we filed our 10-day paperwork with the Board of Election. We had great support from the Board of Election here in Statesville. We do report to the Statesville Board of Election. There was a moment of hilarity when we, we got a phone call from the State Board of Election who said you should report to us because our name is Mooreville and Iredell and Mitchell, which is the first name of the Mooreville school system, Iredell school system, and Mitchell school system, and they thought it was the first name of Mitchell County, so we crossed county lines and should report to Raleigh. We have, of a hard pledge of $40,000, we've taken in 2,500, spent about 100. We have firm pledges. We anticipate picking up remainder this week of $37,005. We anticipate $50,000 in the budget, possibly going higher. The campaign we run is a referendum campaign. Thank you, Ron, for helping us out on that wording for the form, and it is not a politician or a candidate campaign. So it's a little odd. A lot of people think of it as a PAC, and it's really a referendum campaign. We are able to solicit and receive dollars from businesses, for example, which you cannot do as a candidate campaign, and we are doing so, and that's where the bulk of our money will come from, the very economic development you've been entertaining tonight and talking about. We just had a meeting, about 50 people down at Little Joe's Auditorium, Barium Springs, reforming committees. This will be a full-fledged campaign. We will have door hangers, neighborhood groups, advertisements in the newspapers, radio. We've taken out as many ads as we could beat the deadline on for the high school football programs. And we will also be following the rules about when you can contact people and not. We're not using school servers, school phones, school time, that type of stuff. We have our own email address, M-I-M-SchoolsFirst@MyConnection.com, and phone number, et cetera. And we're rapidly building our organization and our list of volunteers, which was the primary meeting tonight. I'll be coming to each of your meetings. If you have any questions, let me know. I'll be providing to, Ron, I can provide it to Mr. Johnson same time, but whatever your protocol is, any of the paperwork that you want us to see, we file through the state, through the local Board of Elections. The next filing date is in late October. And I think that is a short summary, but we're up and we're running. You will see yard signs, you will see advertisements. We hope you see an awful lot of us, and it's up and down the county. Our mailing lists are extensive, and we're hooking in with PTOs and things like that. For your information, according to what I'm getting from the school systems, because the school boards pass affirmative votes in favor of referendum resolutions, their executive staff, superintendents, for example, are allowed not only to inform, but to advocate for the bond. That may be a different thing from what you're thinking. The superintendent-level people may, the school board may, principal staff may not. And that's a split-hair type of thing. So don't be surprised if you hear that. That's coming from their state board legal counsel. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them. You know how to think, how to get up with me, and I am basically the back office. I have all the files and try to make all the nickel-and-dime issues go away. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, and thank you again for your vote.
Any new business? County managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've got two things. First is a reminder, next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, there's a fair dinner sponsored by the Kiwanis, if I'm not mistaken. It's gonna be held at the Civic Center, and I think you should have gotten an invitation, and I think they want to...
Mr. Head, if you intend to come, Mr. Head'd like to hear from you in the next couple of days. You can call me, and I've got his cell number. Give me my head count.
Okay. And then the other item that I have, this is just, I'm gonna give this to you for information. This is an, or a memo from Matthew about a recent court case. There's been some changes in, or well, we're suggesting some changes in the way that we go through our statements of consistency when we, when you are dealing with rezonings. It's gonna look, gonna get a little more complicated, but I think Matthew will try and direct you through the process. I think we've got one coming up next month, or next meeting or next month. And just take a look at this memo. Feel free to call me or call Matthew directly if you have any questions. Not, not a huge change, but you're gonna have to think, think on your feet a little bit more if you want to turn something down.
We have no closed session?
No.
Okay. Unless someone has something else, floor's open for a motion to adjourn.
Make motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Commissioner Hal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.